Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and streaming audience. I would like to welcome everyone to the April 25th Chillicothe City Council meeting. We have 15 items on our agenda this evening. We are meeting here in chambers with public attendance as well as streaming live on YouTube. Moving forward, if you would, Ms. Moss, please continue with the roll call of the members.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Nickerson.
Here.
Payne. Greg Phillips.
Here.
Preston.
Here.
Anthony Phillips.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Minutes of the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? And if not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as they are? Motion by Ms. Payne, seconded by Mr. Pharoah. Roll call on the motion to accept the minutes?
Henderson.
Yes.
Pharoah.
Yes.
Greg Phillips.
Yes.
Nickerson.
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Preston.
Yes.
Anthony Phillips.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
The minutes have been accepted. We'll now go to the reports of our committees. We'll begin with Community Affairs. Mr. Greg Phillips.
Thank you, President Geringer. A couple of things for Community Affairs. Last Monday, we held a committee meeting concerning the waiver of yard sale permits. We had a lively discussion about that and have decided to attempt to do the most complicated scenario and see how that works out for this year. So that will be forthcoming probably on the May 9th agenda. We do have one item on the evening's agenda. It is number 15. I don't think I've ever said that before. And it is an ordinance establishing a nonprofit funding committee and procedures for handling funding requests from community nonprofit organizations. This has been a long time coming, a lot of work. I'm really proud of the members of the Community Affairs just because it's been something that's very needed but has taken a while and just excited to see that finally on an agenda. And that will just move on to a second read. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to Development Committee. Ms. Nickerson.
Thank you, President Geringer. A few things. We met, we had a committee meeting about the Tiffin Development. And we talked about that. We decided it would fit nicely in the planning process that's going on right now in the city. There's a lot of community engagement involved in that, so we thought that we would just let that sit there and work through that process. And then we have two items on the agenda. Number five, the tax abatement for Chillicothe Steel is up for a second read. Then number nine is a first reading for an ordinance accepting the partnership agreement by and between the City of Chillicothe and Ross County for 2022 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program and declaring emergency. This is simply, we do this every year, and there is a deadline. So I will ask to waive the three-read rule at the appropriate time. And that's all Development has at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to our Finance Committee with Mr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, President Geringer. As usual, we have a number of things. I'm going to first go over the agenda items, and then we'll go over committee meeting information. So number one on the agenda is a three-read rule, or I'm sorry, a third reading for the ordinance appropriating the $10,000, $242 received from recycling of scrap water meters. The third item on the agenda, it's a second reading, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $2,500 received from the Ohio Forestry Association. Number four, the fourth item, an ordinance appropriating $11,000 to purchase basically, what is a lie detector test system for the police department. Number eight is a first read, ordinance appropriating $26,000 from two separate funds for the use towards the purchase of a beacon meter reading program for the Utilities Department. And I believe the last item that we have on the agenda to vote on tonight is a first read for an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant fund in the amount of $93,000 and change. This was something that was voted on several months ago, and we're now, we've received the money to pay this purchase order, the equipment, to that vendor. And this is regarding equipment, emergency equipment for the fire department. And so at the appropriate time, Council President, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule on that. Committee meetings, which we had four this past since the last meeting. Number one was basically the committee wants to approve and move forward with legislation for what's called the WINS system. It's an emergency communication system for, I believe it's used for both departments. And the other committee meeting, one of the others, fund appropriation for window and door replacement on Fire Station 4. As we've seen, when a number of projects and purchases, when costs of things go up, so they were replacing a roof as well, and with lumber costs going up, they went over budget, not leaving enough for windows and doors. So we had a small amount of money that we, the committee wanted to appropriate that and move that forward with legislation as well. And another committee meeting that we had, 22039, to be specific, fund appropriation for a diesel steam cleaner for the Sewer Department. And we felt that that was appropriate, decided to move forward with legislation on that. The final committee meeting was the Special Committee meeting, 22033. And this was for the ongoing discussion to approve Mayor's appointment to the Health Board for Dr. John Gabus. And so all committee members were present. That would be myself as the chair, Julie Preston and Dustin Pearl. We also had in attendance the mayor, most of council, and a small, I think maybe five or six people in the audience. It was a two-hour meeting. It was very cordial, which was very pleasant and welcomed. We created an environment that everybody had the opportunity to speak, including audience members, the mayor, myself, other committee members. And at the end of that committee meeting, we felt we had enough information to vote on whether or not we would move John Gabus out of committee towards legislation and then back into council for voting. Dustin Pearl's vote was a yes to move forward. Julie Preston was a no, and mine was a no. So that issue failed in committee. And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, Parks and Recreation Committee. Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, President Geringer. So the first item that Parks and Rec has is item number two. It is, I believe, a third read for the 50 West hosting of a half marathon on Sunday, June 5th. The second item is a first read for the Art in the Streets event, which will be going on this coming Friday. We are declaring an emergency on that due to the timing. I think there was a communication issue there, which we're sorting out. And then, at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three reads on that. And then item number 13, which is the Chillicothe High School Key to Success Celebration on May 12. Couple of announcements. So something pretty cool. Chillicothe is going to be highlighted on NBC between May 9th and May 12th on their series Live Happy, Live Well. So I think that's pretty cool. Everybody tune in, ABC, May 9th through the 12th for Chillicothe. So we had a committee meeting tonight. We had several items on our agenda for the committee meeting. First was Sand in the Streets. So the sand volleyball tournament that was held last year seemed to get a really good response for it. So the committee's going to move that forward. And then, new event, it's called Pottery Throwdown, which will be hosted by Mighty Children's Museum and Nellie Dog Pottery and Paints. So they're on Fourth Street, right there by the Children's Museum. They will have some different potters set up who will be participating in different challenges. So I think that'll be really cool to watch. They're also going to have some pottery stations set up for kids to learn how to throw pottery, they call it throwing. I thought it was spinning, but I guess it's throwing. Really neat, so a great educational opportunity for children. And the proceeds are hopefully going to go toward the community splash pad that has not completely lost traction. So we're going to move forward with the closing of that street for this event. Then we had three items from the Lost Tribe Motorcycle Club. One for fireworks viewing party, a wedding, and then a special event that they do called Butterfly in the Sky. Proceeds go to children and families in need. Last year, their event raised $13,000 and went to help five different families, five different families around our community. So wonderful event there. And the last was the Carver Community Center. Two different street closures, one for Lupus Awareness Day, which will be May 14th, and then South End Community Day, which will be on Walnut Street between 6th and 7th Street. And that'll be July 9th. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Next, Safety Service Committee. Ms. Preston.
Thank you, President Geringer. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It's item number six. It's going to be a first reading, an ordinance amending section 505.14 of the codified ordinance of the City of Chillicothe as it pertains to prohibiting certain animals to be kept or harbored within corporation limits of the City of Chillicothe. We've had several committee meetings in regards to this situation. It's kind of been something that's been hanging around since 2019. So we're cleaning up, actually getting rid of the 1800-something livestock and stockyard law and cleaning up the ordinance. So Jason Miller worked really well on this with me. And so that's the only thing we have on the agenda. The other thing I want to remind everybody about is Yellow Day is May 6th. It's where they're going to paint the downtown yellow. There'll be live music, food, and more from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. And during the daytime, starting about 9 o'clock, city school kids and flage kids are going to come downtown and show random acts of kindness, walk around to the local business. Certain businesses have been designated yellow businesses, and you can see a window cling in their window, and they'll be participating with those kids. So it's a pretty neat thing. It's been going on for a few years. So that's it. Thank you.
Next, Engineering Committee. Mr. Pharoah.
Thank you. On behalf of the Engineering Committee, we don't have anything on the agenda or nothing new to report. All use is time to go ahead and cover for transit and city services. City services, we have two items on tonight's agenda. The first one will be a first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for Road Salt and Declaring Emergency. Because of a deadline of May 14th to have this information uploaded on ODOT's website, I am going to ask at the appropriate time to waive the three-read rule. And then the second item is the first reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter contracts for annual supplies and maintenance and repair of the equipment required by the City of Chillicothe for fiscal year 2022 and declaring an emergency as well, since this is an annual request. And I know we've had some inquiries about it. I will ask at the appropriate time to waive the three-read rule. That will be all of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, our Utilities Committee. Mr. Pearl.
All right. Well, Utilities has no items on tonight's agenda. However, as a part of the Special Committee, I do want to file a minority report. And so I will read this little statement here. It says, fellow council-
I'd like to object to the reading of minority report.
Do I have a second on the objection to the reading of the minority report? Seconded by Ms. Preston. A roll call on the motion to reject the minority report?
You can't reject the minority report. You can reject the, the, once it goes to a motion, you can reject the motion, and then it won't become, you know, I'll explain that here in the reading.
Unless there's a motion.
I'm not asking you to read it yet. I haven't made a motion to read it. I'm explaining what it is. My fellow council members, in response to the report by the Chair of the Special Committee tasked with determining the fitness of Dr. Gabus for the appointment to the Ross County Health Board, I at this time am going to file a minority report. A minority report is allowed in council rules. It permits council members who held a minority opinion at the conclusion of a committee meeting to ask the full council to consider an action counter or moderated from the majority of the committee. The minority report process preserves the rights of the majority of council to be heard regardless of the opinion of the minority of council, and that may hold, that may hold a majority of a single committee. In the case of the committee's decision not to recommend Dr. Gabus for the Health Board, I respectfully ask that the whole council be permitted to cast a vote. I'm not asking you at this time to support Dr. Gabus, but rather the process itself. In a moment, I will make a motion, and should it be seconded-
Mr. Pearl, Robert's Rule states it's required for the majority of the vote to receive it.
To receive the report?
To receive the report. So if you're making statements about your opinions on it, that's different than reading the report.
No, I'm just explaining what the, what a minority report is.
Well, you've gone past that.
Because that's, you know, I thought that we needed to know that. But okay, we could-
You're registering opinion on what your minority report is versus what a minority report is by definition. So Ms. Henderson moved to block it. It was seconded by Ms. Preston. Roll call on the motion not to receive minority report?
Greg Phillips.
The motion is to block the minority report.
So that would be an affirmative if I want to block it?
A yes block it, right?
Yes.
Payne.
Yes.
Nickerson.
No.
Pharoah.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Preston.
Yes.
Anthony Phillips.
Yes.
Pearl.
No.
President Geringer, at this time, I'd like to change my vote. Yes.
Motion to block the minority report has passed.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my report.
From there, we'll move on to the reports of our officials. Our mayor, Mr. Luke Feeney. I'm sorry, I missed Human Resources.
I wouldn't want to be missed this evening. Thank you, President Geringer. Human Resources, we do not have an item on the agenda tonight and nothing new to report on, but we may need to come back and visit at the appropriate time. On 3/28, we passed the non-bargaining ordinance, and then two weeks later, on 4/14, we amended it. But we may need to come back and vote on that amendment this evening at the appropriate time. That concludes my report.
And now we'll move on to our reports of officials. Our mayor, Mr. Luke Feeney.
They violated our own council rules, is what happened.
In that case, to put this issue to rest, Mr. Pearl, finish your commentary on your minority report, and then we'll have a vote on replacing the committee report with the minority report.
Okay. Again, fellow council members, in response to the report posted by the Chair of the Special Committee tasked with determining the fitness of Dr. Gabus for the appointment to the Ross County Health Board, I at this time am going to file a minority report. A minority report is allowed for in our council rules, and it permits the council members who have a minority opinion at the conclusion of a committee meeting to ask the full council to consider an action counter or moderated from that of the majority of that said committee. The minority report process preserves the rights of the majority of council to be heard regardless of the opinion of a minority of the council that may hold a majority of a single committee. In the case of the committee's decision not to recommend Dr. Gabus for the Health Board, I respectfully ask that the whole council be permitted to cast a vote. I'm not asking you to, at this time, to support Dr. Gabus, but rather the process. In a moment, I will make a motion, and should it be seconded and approved by the majority of, by a majority vote, the matter would then be put before council for consideration at the next regular meeting to allow the Law Director to prepare appropriate resolution if necessary. A yes vote preserves the majority's right to be heard and to judge Dr. Gabus's candidacy for themselves. Should the council fail to second the motion, or should the motion fail after the motion, then it is considered the end of the action recommended. So a no vote would then put an end to Dr. John Gabus's candidacy for the Health Board. So at this time, I would respectfully make a motion that the full council be allowed to vote on whether or not the appointment recommendation should be placed before council for a resolution.
I believe the, the motion should be to replace the committee report with the minority report, not a motion to vote on John Gabus.
Yeah, that's, that would be, to replace the minority report with that of-
Replace the committee report with the minority report.
Yeah, replace the committee report with a, with the minority report.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second from Ms. Nickerson? Roll call on the motion to replace?
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. Yeah, because that could be, yeah, just the way I worded it, I was, yeah, I see what you mean.
So the motion is to replace the committee report with the minority report. A yes is to replace the committee report. A no would be to validate the committee, original committee report. Roll call on the motion.
Nickerson.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Pharoah.
No.
Payne.
No.
Preston.
No.
Anthony Phillips.
No.
Pearl.
Yes.
Greg Phillips.
No.
Henderson.
No.
Motion to replace committee report with minority report fails.
Thank you. That concludes my report, and I do appreciate being allowed to offer that report. So thank you to all the council members for your vote regardless. Thanks a lot.
Moving back then to Mayor Feeney, if you have additional items to report on.
Thank you, President Geringer. I'll start with offering my disappointment in council's action tonight and by thanking Dr. Gabus for his continued commitment to this community and enduring this process and the meeting he endured a Monday ago. With that, I will report on tonight's agenda. Just a couple of items I wanted to make sure I emphasized their passage tonight. We have an item on salt. I would encourage waiver of the three-read rule on that item tonight so that we can participate in ODOT's cooperative salt purchasing process and as well as item, just, well, there were several, several others, but the salt one in terms of administrative procedure is the one that we really need tonight, so thank you. And then just a couple of other items of good news I wanted to report on. Earlier today, we had Whitehall Police Chief Mike Crispin, who is, does leadership training in different parts of the state, came and gave our leadership team a four-hour course and training. I also want to thank Petland for offering their corporate headquarters and training facility to facilitate that training and for all of our city leadership for participating. It was, it was an excellent training. A reminder that we are doing our, I'm doing the State of the City this coming Friday at 8:30. The event will be livestreamed on the Chamber of Commerce's website and Facebook page, and you can attend in person at the old post office at the corner of Fifth and Paint. Exciting news today, we submitted, Chief Myers and Planning and Development Director Powell submitted a $1.6 million COPS application that would fund several, COPS is a, is an acronym, it's not just a COPS application. Several hiring and supportive positions in that department. It's a big ask, but we think it's a strong application, so we're excited about that possibility. And then finally, I wanted to comment on recent conversations about farm traffic in and around the city. Over time, we have had a fair bit of experience with farm traffic on Watt Street. The facility that's on Watt has been there for a long time and is something that the neighbors have become relatively familiar with, and the city sort of built up around that facility and has learned different ways to navigate. We have essentially a new farm facility that is not in the city anymore. Several years ago, what was formerly running Fox Golf Course was purchased by somebody who was to farm it- Earlier today, we had Whitehall Police Chief Mike Crispin, who does leadership training different parts of the state, came and gave our leadership team a four-hour course in training. I also want to thank Petland for offering their corporate headquarters and training facility to facilitate that training, and for all of our city leadership for participating. It was an excellent training. A reminder that we are doing our, I'm doing the State of the City this coming Friday at 8:30. The event will be livestreamed on the Chamber of Commerce's website and Facebook page, and you can attend in person at the old post office at the corner of Fifth and Paint. Exciting news today, we submitted, Chief Myers and Planning and Development Director Powell submitted a $1.6 million COPS application that would fund several, COPS is an acronym, it's not just a COPS application, several hiring and supportive positions in that department. It's a big ask, but we think it's a strong application, so we're excited about that possibility. And then, finally, I wanted to comment on recent conversations about farm traffic in and around the city. Over time, we have had a fair bit of experience with farm traffic on Watt Street. The facility that's on Watt has been there for a long time, and is something that the neighbors have become relatively familiar with, and the city sort of built up around that facility and has learned different ways to navigate. We have essentially a new farm facility that is not in the city anymore. Several years ago, what was formerly running Fox Golf Course was purchased by somebody who was to farm it, and then subsequently, that entity deannexed, sued the city for deannexation, and that was a case that we lost. And so, what used to be city, in the city, is now not in our corporation limits. And further, the use of that property has caused fairly significant, and seems to have ramped up over the last couple of years, probably because of the success of the farming, road traffic, especially heavy traffic on Pawnee and other roads back in the manor. And so, after a review of our ordinances, state law, we've been unable to come to a solution that remedies the situation easily for the residents in that area. And so, I'm sending to council a request for council to consider solutions, anything from, and I've had very good impact from the residents back there, as I know Councilwoman Nickerson has as well, over the variety of ideas that they come up with, but in addition, just the unpleasant nature of the new traffic. This isn't anything against those who are farming the property, but I do think that the residents back there have the right to some quiet enjoyment of that property they've enjoyed for so long. And so, I'll be sending to council a request for council to consider anything from signage to new weight regulations, and I've even had somebody propose the extension of a road, which would actually be the extension of Seamy Road, which goes kind of back behind Big Sandy. So, there is a range of cheap $25 signs and really expensive roads, but I'll be happy to work with council on those options. We can't be the only community in the state that has faced something like this, but we feel internally that we've exhausted our exploration and don't have anything to rely on to remedy the situation, so it's needed that council explore potential for laws or rules to help, help the neighborly situation in that neighborhood. And then, finally, I'll just finish with congratulating those participants and organizers and volunteers with the buck fifty this past weekend. It was a beautiful, beautiful weekend for the rest of us, awfully hot weekend for anybody who is running their share of 150 miles. Great event for the community, great showcase for our city, so thanks for all who were involved. With that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our auditor, Mrs. Spetnagle.
I do not have anything to report tonight, other than just letting everyone know that I did a budget review prior to this meeting, and I did send out the financial statements to council, so if you have any questions, you can let me know, other than that, really hot. And that concludes my report.
Moving next to our law director, Ms. Villarreal.
Thank you. I don't have a formal report, but I do, as the mayor said, I do want to state my disappointment, but not in what happened. My disappointment is in the miscommunication and the misinformation that I think has been distributed, and as I sit back here quietly in the corner and listen to this and watch this, I wonder if it would be much easier if perhaps the public knew that when this all went down, that there was a letter sent to council people from the health district asking them not to appoint a doctor, asking them to appoint somebody else. That put them in an awkward position. The mayor has the ability to point who he would like to appoint. They don't want a doctor, he wants a doctor. I feel like this group of people got caught in the crossfire, as well as Dr. Gabus. So, from my position, I hope it's, this is put to rest, for number one, for Dr. Gabus's, for his sanity. It could have been Dr. John Doe, it could have been anybody, just the fact that he was a doctor, that's my understanding of what happened. So, but I don't like how it appears like it's a hammer against one man, or a hammer against, or it's a party line thing, or it's, I've heard all these terrible things, and I just feel it's misinformation, and people should speak up and say, you know, if you got a letter, and that's why you voted, because that's what you were told they didn't want, then say so. Let the public know what's going on, and if it's, if there's a reason why, if there's some alleged steering from this hospital to that hospital going on, and they wanted somebody from this hospital on the board to keep things local, then say so. Maybe a little more information would help. So, that's what I would suggest you do in the future, instead of making all these wild allegations and causing a bunch of uproar for nothing. That's my report.
Thank you. Moving on to the report for myself, I reiterate what Mayor Feeney said. We'd like to thank Dr. Gabus for his willingness to participate in this process, as well as his years of service to the community. We look forward to the next nominations, as we work on those, with committee to find the members and nominations that, one, reflect the city's makeup, and, two, reflect the best needs of the community, not that Dr. Gabus didn't, but just in general. That's my report.
We'll now move on to audience participation. Council Rule 22 does limit each speaker to a five-minute presentation, and a total limitation of 15 minutes per any single subject. You get to the point where you're getting close to one minute left, I'll try to indicate to you that your time is about to expire, and to summarize your presentation, anyone who wishes to speak, we do need for our records your name and your address.
It's me again. Michael Cade, 380 Meadow Lane, and I want to say thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President. And I find in my last few visits, very interesting things. Thanks for the budget system tonight, it was probably about an eighth of it, I understand, but I'm getting there. So, anyway, I don't know about this idea of you guys having just one subject that I can maybe mention, or is it bringing us five minutes, or is it like two or three? Gotcha. One of the issues, and this is not going to cost the city 26 and a half million dollars, so don't go sweating. Anyway, I find in a lot of the intersections in town, there are objects that block intersections, like brush, or signs, or benches, and this is coming from an old person that needs more vision, to be able to see down the intersection. And I could give you a list, but off the top of my head, maybe four or five, but there's several. And so, that's one subject. The other subject I was thinking about, and I know that the street paving system is from 2016 to 2021, does that mean we're going to have to vote this year on a continuation? Ken? Good, thank you. That clears stuff up. Another thing is, is I know you have a program, and you're designing it, and, you know, going to implement it, but would it be okay if a city person like me would have some information on what's planned for a street pavement, and what street? We're left in limbo. We don't have no clue. The last time a street was paved in my neighborhood, I found out by the guy that does the paving, told me, "Hey, guess what? You guys are going to get a new street paving job." I went, "Well, okay, that's cool." So, anyway, that's the situation there. So, anyway, I didn't know if it was, would be appropriate or not, if I could help spread the news if I knew what street we're planning for. And I want to say thanks for the work you guys are doing on the farm situation that's been, you know, discussed and worked on, that kind of thing. I appreciate that, that you're working on that, and hopefully, something can be worked out along that line. So, anyway, those are the things that is on my mind that don't cost much, so thank you. Thank you. You mentioned, I know our law director mentioned about the doctor situation, and I want to say that, yes, I'm one of the people that don't know what's going on. And so, that was a good, I thought, a good idea, that the public, now, some of the public I know do know what's going on, but I don't, so thank you.
Can I respond to that? We've had a committee meeting, we've aired everything on Facebook, YouTube, so we have been very transparent in this process. Maybe we need, well, we have, the city page always has the agenda on it, so we try to be very transparent. And I do, and I'll just give you a call, I'll put you on my list.
My name is John Thacker. I'm from 990, Columbus Street, apartment 307, here in Chillicothe. I like to think of us all here as neighbors. This isn't a big city, Chillicothe is still, for a lot of people, a small city or big town, depending on how you look at it. So, I don't want to think that there are nefarious things going on in the background. I really doubt that that's the case, but I can't help but wonder if Dr. Gabus was ill-served by this process. I don't know him personally, I just know that people that I respect supported him and gave testimony here before you as to his qualifications, and if he's not qualified, then maybe, maybe nobody is. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
We will now move to old business. Does anyone have any old business they would like to bring up this evening? Yes, Ms. Phil.
Yeah, this issue with Dr. Gabus has been, as we all have stated, extremely unpleasant. You know, being presented with this, the second meeting of our, my new career, if you want to say it, not a career, but anyway, and as the law director said as well, there could have been more transparency as to the why, but frankly, it took a couple months just to absorb the shock of the onslaught of the negative comments. We were very transparent in the committee meeting that we had recently, so I, it has never been about the person, ever, even though some of the audience members at the special committee meeting couldn't believe all the bad things we were saying about John Gabus, and we all asked, "Could you please tell us the bad things we said about John?" And he says, "Well, I just heard that you were saying bad things." Right. So, nothing bad was said about John, and as the mayor said, he had to endure this, but frankly, we all had to endure this for the last three months, because of leadership that kept pushing this, not us. So, I would ask for clarification from the mayor on a statement made, I believe, two months ago. I think it was after the first committee meeting, we actually voted twice, so, you know, technically, there was two votes that day, one when we voted both Seal and John together, and then we voted them separately, for clarification, and rightfully so. And honestly, I can't remember if there was another vote, and then that's when we all took pause and realized that maybe, and I think mayor, not trying to quote you, but if you could clarify this, that you mentioned that if everybody doesn't like the way this process is going, let's be open and transparent, let's get a list together, and work together on this. And then, later that week, the email come out that, you know, reminding us of your authority and position and right to appoint somebody, and that you still wanted Gabus to go forward, and we didn't hear any more about working together in a list. So, without characterizing that, if we could have some clarification on that statement, and then just maybe a general statement of how we might move forward on appointing health board members at this point. It does, and there were some good suggestions in your dialogue there that I will like to follow up with and take on as suggestions. It was very specific, I'm not trying to be contentious, and if anybody else heard that, I'm not the one who said it, I'm just asking for clarification, which you gave me, and you said, but that was kind of a big deal, when you said, "Hey, I understand y'all don't like the way this has transpired, let's put a list together and work together." And I can remember...
She's got it in minutes there, right? I'll read it, I'll read my report, I'll read it out loud at the next meeting. My apologies to the community, my microphone is not on. I'd have trouble remembering what I just said, let alone what I said at a meeting three months ago, but if the list, councilman... But if the list, Councilman, was something that you wanted to see, this is the first time you've asked me about it. My door's open. You have my cellphone. Just call. It's easy. Now, I still stand behind the doctor Gavis appointment. I thought it was fair that you gave him a committee meeting. And here we are.
I have one suggestion to try to maybe reach some type of normalcy in the ground area. You're correct. The first vote was the night that it was on your desk, was the first time you didn't see it, and you wanted additional information, if I remember correctly. Then, then you all got this letter. I think with that letter, had, had I known about the letter, I would have immediately asked him, do they have to listen to them? Is, what weight do they have to give that letter? Is it zero? Is it a hundred? I think that would have helped you tremendously if, if we, if you would have known that that letter, you should give that letter zero weight. Because this is, the mayor has three people he could put on there. They have four people they can put on there. They shouldn't be able to dictate who he gets, regardless. But I think that would have helped. But I think that's what the stumbling block was. You got this letter from a third party. You didn't know how much weight to give it. And that's, and in my opinion, that's what resulted to where we are now. And I want to say again that I think this is, nobody in this entire city is anti-Gavis. I think it was the letter that was taken for the letter from that board. And I think people did not understand the weight or the not weight to give it. And that little bit of information, moving forward, for whatever reason, if there's a total of seven and you get three, maybe everybody needs to know that right up front. And don't give them weight, give him weight, these are his appointments. Or give it 50/50, or whatever you all decide. But I think that would help. And maybe, like I said, if I would have known about that letter, I would have been making copies of it. But regardless, again, I want to move, ask everybody to, it's not just transparency at the committee meetings, because the public really honestly doesn't even attend committee meetings. I think, you know, you all, you know, there were four or five of you that do that committee, but not everybody. So, I mean, I, I think just in, in general itself, to try to, to move things forward, and, and as long as everybody is aware of what's going on and what the circumstances are, and, so nobody's feelings get hurt for no reason. That's what concerns me. And I don't want to create walls, or see you all create walls, when there shouldn't be any. So I would just ask you to just please keep it in mind, moving forward, and of each appointment, regardless of who it is or what it is, and, and get that weight in your head correctly, and we'll move forward, and everybody will be fine.
Moving next to participation and correspondence received by the clerk.
I received one item of correspondence this week, and we are working through the process of getting that taken care of.
Just for note, that was in relationship to a liquor license. Next on the agenda is new business. Does anyone have anything new that they would like to bring up at this time? Mr. Pearl.
Mr. President, I have something on a lighter note to cheer us all up. This weekend, starting on Friday, Friday at 7:00, and then Saturday at 7:00, and then Sunday at 2:00, Zane Trace High School will be having their senior class play, which is Little Shop of Horrors. And it, the tickets will be from $10 to $8. And I, I would recommend you all come to see it if you want to see me try to sing and dance. I got roped into this because my daughter is in the drama club, and I agreed to help them in any way possible, not realizing that when you open your big mouth like that, someone may ask you to actually put up or shut up. So I have been learning to dance and sing. If you want an assault on your eyes and ears, you can come and see me. Or if you want to be just blown away by the talent of local kids, I would like to see you show up there. It's going to be really nice. These kids have been working for months to put this show together, and they're very talented and very patient with an old man with absolute no talent. So that's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at Zane Trace. And they have information on their Facebook page, I believe, as well. So just wanted to let you know, and that's all.
Thank you. As far as committee assignments, we have had several since our last meeting. I'll try to briefly go through those. Some of them are actually on the agenda this evening. Assignment 22046, Finance, HVAC System Quote for Appropriation for Station 1. Assignment 22045, Parks and Recreation, Street Closure, Butterfly in the Streets. 22044, Parks and Recreation, Street Closure, Pottery Throwdown. We have a reassignment of 028, which is Bid, Approval for Bid. 22043, Street Closure, Parks and Recs, Sand in the Street. 22041, Parks and Recreation, Street Closure, Keys to Success. 22040, Community Affairs, Yard Sale. And 22039, Finance, Fund Appropriation for Diesel Steam Cleaner. And that's what we've had go out as assignments since our last meeting. So from there, let's move on to our legislation. Tonight, we have 15 items on the agenda. Ms. Moss, whenever you're ready, we'll start with item number one.
Item number one is a third reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $10,242.60 received from the recycling of scrap water meters for the use toward replacing other aged meters in the city's water distribution system.
Roll call on the ordinance.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed. Item number two. Roll call on the resolution. Sorry, moving on to item number two, please.
Item number two is the third reading of a resolution expressing cooperation in granting use of a portion of Paint Street to the 50 West Brewing Company for the 50 West Half Marathon, Sunday, June 5th, 2022.
Roll call on the resolution.
Payne?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
The resolution has passed. Please read item three.
Item number three is a second reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $2,000, $2,500 received from the Ohio Forestry Association.
That item will move to our next agenda. Item number four.
Item number four is a second reading of an ordinance appropriating $11,000 to purchase a Computer Voice Stress Analysis III System for the Chillicothe Police Department.
That item will move to the next agenda. Item number five.
Item number five is a second reading of an ordinance consenting to an Ohio Enterprise Zone and Tax Abatement Agreement between the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and J.C. Properties of Chillicothe, LLC, doing business as Chillicothe Steel.
That item will move to the next agenda. Item number six.
Item number six is a first reading of an ordinance amending Section 505.14 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe as it pertains to prohibiting certain animals to be kept or harbored within the corporation limits of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio.
That item will move to our next agenda. Item number seven.
Item number seven is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for Road Salt and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Pharaoh.
At this time, so that we can meet the deadline of May 14th and give ample time to the administrative to get everything turned in, I ask that we waive the three-read rule on this.
Motion by Mr. Pharaoh, seconded by Mr. Pearl. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion passes. Roll call on the ordinance.
Pearl?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number eight.
Item number eight is the first reading of an ordinance appropriating $2,600 for the use toward the purchase of a beacon meter reading program for the Utilities Department.
This will move on to the next agenda. Item number nine.
Item number nine is the first reading of an ordinance accepting the partnership agreement by and between the City of Chillicothe and Ross County for the PY 2022 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program and declaring an emergency.
At this time, I would like to waive the three-read rule in order to make the deadline.
Motion by Ms. Nickerson to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Ms. Payne. Roll call on the motion.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Roll call on the ordinance.
Payne?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is the first reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating grant funding in the amount of $93,347.96 for use by the Chillicothe Fire Department for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment and declaring an emergency.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Pearl.
This time, thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule, to pay this long overdue purchase order, and to get this matter taken care of.
Motion by Mr. Anthony Phillips, seconded by Mr. Pearl. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Payne?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Roll call on the ordinance.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is the first reading of a resolution expressing cooperation in granting use of a certain portion of East Second Street to the Downtown Chillicothe Organization for the Pump House Center for the Arts, Art in the Streets Event on April 29th, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
President Geringer, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
Motion by Ms. Henderson, seconded by Mrs. Payne. Roll call on the motion to waive.
Pearl?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Motion to waive the three-read rule passes. Roll call on the resolution.
Preston?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yep.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Item number 12.
Item number 12 is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for annual supplies and maintenance and repair of the equipment required by the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, for the fiscal year 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Pharaoh.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion and ask that we waive the three-read rule.
Motion by Mr. Pharaoh, seconded by Mr. Greg Phillips. Roll call on the motion to waive the three-read rule.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion passes. Roll call on the ordinance.
Pearl?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Item number 13.
Item number 13 is a resolution expressing cooperation in granting use of a certain portion of Paint Street to the Chillicothe City Schools for its Keys to Success Event on May 12th, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
President Geringer, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read.
Motion to waive the three-read rule from Ms. Henderson, seconded by Mr. Pharaoh. Roll call on the motion.
Greg Phillips?
I will abstain as the city schools liaison for keys to success.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Motion passes. Roll call on the resolution.
Greg Phillips?
Abstain.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Item number 14.
Item number 14 is the first reading of an ordinance appropriating funds to pay for the demolition of a home located at 182 Western Avenue.
This item will move to the next agenda. Item number 15.
Item number 15 is the first reading of an ordinance establishing a nonprofit funding committee and procedures for handling funding requests from community nonprofit organizations.
This item will move to our next agenda. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to add or bring up at this time? Kathy?
Might need to ask the law director, Spillerill. Is it appropriate for us to talk about the non-bargaining ordinance and vote on that again? It's not on the agenda, we'd have to. Yes.
I believe it was passed two meetings ago. I believe it was reconsidered by motion and then amended by motion in the last meeting.
Correct.
I'm not certain, but I think the procedure would be to potentially reconsider, move to reconsider the amended motion of the previous meeting, and then move to vote on it, if that's within the rules. I mean, my take would be that you're reconsidering the amended motion. It's been passed. The meeting after that passed, it was amended, but never voted on.
Correct.
So, you would be reconsidering that amendment, that amended ordinance. I mean, I suppose you could do it, and in between now and the next meeting, you could figure out if that was accurate. Really, what we're talking about here is only the paying of the nuisance officer position.
Right.
So, we can hold back from hiring a full-time position. We have a pay structure for a part-time position, and you could just put it on the agenda for the next meeting and avoid any confusion. At this point, I think I would just do it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And I think, Councilwoman Payne, I think it can be, at that point, submitted as its own item, so just simply a pay structure for the single employee would be added to the non-bargaining ordinance, and we can kind of disregard that the amendment never happened.
Okay. Sounds great. We'll bring it up next time. Thank you.
Any additional items? If not, at this time, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by Mr. Farah, seconded by Mr. Greg Phillips. Roll call on the motion?
Greg Phillips?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Nickerson?
Yes.
Pharoah?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Anthony Phillips?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening.